Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, January 6th Public Meeting of the Halton District School Board. I forgot to start it. Did you start it? Thank you. Our technicians are wonderful. I'd like to wish everyone a very happy New Year. This is our first meeting for the 2016 year and we're halfway through our school year. It's hard to believe, but we're coming up into the end of first semester exams. Lots of things are happening. So, I would like to ask if everyone could turn off their sound of their phones or computers or whatever else they may have that makes noise. And everyone is here, but we have regrets from Trustee Sahai. Okay, do we have... I need a motion to approve our agenda tonight. Trustee Grabent, seconded by Trustee Gray. Is there any discussion on our agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Do we have any declarations of possible conflict of interest tonight? Seeing none, we have no delegations or presentations. So, we'll move on to the minutes of the Halton District School Board meeting from December 16th, 2015. Do I have a motion to approve? Moved by Trustee Reynolds, seconded by Trustee L. Harrison. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. We are now up to approval of business transacted in private. Do we have anything for approval from private session today? None. Thank you. So, we will move on to our order paper. Is there any discussion on our order paper tonight? Seeing none, we're up to our action items. Oh, okay, I didn't see anybody on the speaker list. Trustee L. Harrison. Oh, well, it did have Harrison. Now it has all. Okay, Trustee Oliver.
Okay, thank you. With respect to motion, I can't read it. M130073 is the third one listed. I'm just wondering if we have a timeline for this assessment that the previous board had set out to do regarding assessment of gifted entry, gifted screening process and review.
Director Miller?
Through your Chair Amos to Trustee Oliver. I'm going to defer to Superintendent Zoniffeld, but we did bring to the last board meeting a revised report, or revised time when that report would come. And it would be next year, I believe, the next school year. It might even be 2017. Yeah, February 2017. The reason being is, as a result of some of the sanctions that were in place, the superintendent and his team were unable to confer and consult with many of the appropriate people. And now that there's agreements, we've still been a bit slow getting back to doing those things for obvious reasons. We want people to get back into their regular jobs and do all those other things. So, I don't know if Superintendent Zoniffeld wants to comment any further.
Superintendent Zoniffeld?
Yeah, through the Chair to Trustee Reynolds, just the nature of the work... Sorry. Sorry, Trustee Oliver. The nature of the work requires us to take a pretty extensive look at both our process and where that takes us in terms of our screening, our nomination process, those things of students for gifted programming. So, we want to do this right. If you recall, we've brought data forward looking at, as a system, the numbers, the spread across schools, all that we brought in previous reports. And then, one other piece of this is that we're wanting to make sure that we have a full picture of all of our system of five years of data. And we didn't have that until this fall because Burlington was the first area to do this primary gifted process, started a year before the others. So, the rest of the board, five years of data, we finally have this fall. So, now that we have that data, we can move ahead with the rest of our assessment process, evaluation of what that looks like. So, we know it's going to take us some time. And then, it's compounded by, we have two other motions that came through from CAC through to the board that we're also working on at the same time. So, we have three going at once. And just the workload of all that to bring it forward, that's why we've asked for the deferral to next February.
Go ahead.
And I'm thinking that motion, M140142, is similarly effective in a similar situation. This is to do with the review of supervision of students with high safety risks.
Yes, through the Chair, that one, because we did look at the deferral dates for those.
Through your Chair Amos, it's also 2017, January 2017, just prior to the gifted one. Similar reasons.
Yes.
Sorry, through the Chair to Trustee Oliver.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
January 20th.
Through Chair Amos to Trustee Oliver and all trustees. On the back of your package are some of the revised, is a revised board report package, I guess is the best way to describe it with timelines and dates.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions on the order paper tonight? Seeing none, we will then move on to our first action item. Item 3.4.1, Ombudsman, Trustee Collard, report 15167, revised on page 11 of your board package. Trustee Collard?
Yes, I would like to just let trustees know that I sent out an email earlier today further revising the recommendation after conversation with Director Miller. And I believe he concurs with the wording of the new motion. And I forwarded it to all trustees. So, if that could be read in place of the one that's in the package this evening, that would be most appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. I will read the motion. "Be it resolved, the Halton District School Board staff review the current internal processes for public complaints in light of the Office of the Ombudsman's new mandate to investigate public complaints regarding school boards and report back to the board for the end of the 2015-16 school year." Moved by Trustee Collard, seconded by Trustee Gray. Is there any comments or questions before Trustee Reynolds?
Through the Chair, I'd just like to reflect that this recommendation is much more in line with, I think, our roles in our policy development. I feel much more comfortable with the recommendation and will so support it. And thank you for revising it.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions on this motion? Director Miller?
Through your Chair Amos to Trustee Collard and all trustees. I think this is an important motion because we do need to take a look at our processes vis a vis the ombuds person. And so, yeah.
Thank you. And seeing no other comments or questions, all those in favor. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. So, our next item is the Board Recognition Program Policy. Director Miller, report 15178 on page 12 of your board package. Director Miller?
Through Chair Amos to all trustees, the report's before you. This is our standard procedure, a process where the board, the report will go up on the website for 25 days inviting people for comment. I would like to comment and thank trustees for the work they've done on this. I think, as representing the staff, I think it's really significant that we have a recognition program and that supports the work of students, staff, and et cetera. So, I do want to thank the trustees for this.
Thank you. I'm going to put the motion on the floor. "Be it resolved, the Halton District School Board approved the Board Recognition Program Policy as appended to report 15178." Moved by Trustee L. Harrison, seconded by Trustee Reynolds. Discussion. Trustee L. Harrison?
Thank you. So, I just wanted to thank everyone involved. We came a long way with the development of the policy and I'm glad it's before us tonight. And I just wanted to say that in the background, I believe the program also has a name, which is Inspire. And we look forward to seeing the communication staff's talent and pulling together a visual identity that really speaks to the purpose of the program and look forward to honoring our first recipients in very short order. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? I would like to say something. I would like to thank all my fellow trustees. You have inspired me in the fact that we are now going to be recognizing the staff, the students, and the community. And I think this is something that's long overdue and I am thrilled that we are moving forward with this program. So, all those in favor. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So, our next item is our student trustee reports. Looking forward to hearing from Trustee Schneider.
Good evening, everyone. So, since the last meeting in the break, nothing much has changed with our Student Senate and everything. But I thought I would bring everyone up to date with what's going on provincially with student trustees because I am an executive on the Ontario Student Trustees Association. So, we do a lot of work there. And Halton District School Board is a proud member board as well. So, it's good to keep everyone in the loop. So, we have exact meetings every month. And right now, we are vigorously planning our next conference, which is in Ottawa in February. So, that's coming up quick. And at that conference is really a work conference. So, we're working on the various projects that are going on over this year. And there are various committees, including a First Nations Work Committee, as well as we're bringing back the OSPEZ survey, which is a student survey from all across Ontario. And organizations have actually used that data. And so, we're bringing that back. We also attend various consultations, including EQAO consultations, ministry consultations, representing the student voice. There's a lot of work there. I'm the communications officer. So, this year, we're doing a project where it's, if any of you have heard of Humans of New York, it's just inspired by that, but for the students of Ontario. So, there's five interview questions. And I've asked students from boards all across Ontario to ask their senators too, to do these interviews and hopefully post some of those to show, bring perspective on to the different kinds of students in Ontario, what they go through, their realities, things like that. Our organization also is expanding to, or working to expand student trustee, the role to other provinces. So, we're going to Alberta, British Columbia. There's already been some student trustees there, starting up and really lobbying for the importance of this role in other provinces and why it's been successful here in Ontario. In PBC, which is the Public Board Council, this year, the big project for us is a mental health conference. So, there's ongoing work with that. And there was also, many of you know, the Toronto District School Board Governance Advisory Panel Report. And there was a section on it that was actually a lot of work from a past president of our organization who did that. And we're working on doing position papers about that. And there are suggestions about various positions in the student trustee role that could change potentially. And that's very interesting. For Senate, just a review of what we said at the last meeting, we're finalizing the Student Voice Day, that research day. We're planning our conference, HILS. For our next meeting, we're hopefully having a northern location for the northern student senators for it to be more accessible and have them remotely to the board. And we're also looking to have the assessment and valuation, people come in for a panel for our student senators to inquire and ask questions. And that's about it. So, thank you.
That was a lot for not really having a lot to share. Well, thank you for your report. Are there any comments or questions for Trustee Schneider tonight? Seeing none, thank you for your report. It sounds like there's a lot of great things happening provincially and at the board. So, we'll look forward to your next one. Our next item is notices of motion. Do we have any notices of motion tonight? Trustee Collard?
Thank you. Last night, CAC passed a motion that they wanted brought forward to the board for consideration at the board. And so, I'm giving notice of motion this evening that this motion will be coming into the next package. And I'll just read it out so that it's in the record. "Whereas students with special education needs may be placed in self-contained classes through an identification and placement review process. And whereas students with special education needs may be particularly sensitive to transitions. And whereas many of these self-contained placements are located regionally and may require students to attend a school that is not their home school. And whereas these placements may result in additional accommodation pressures at the host school, thereby resulting in the relocation of the placement. Therefore, be it resolved that CAC recommends the following motion be brought forward to the next public board meeting of the Halton District School Board. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board staff develop an administrative procedure regarding the location and relocation of special education placements with specific regard to reducing the number of transitions for students with special education needs and that CAC be consulted in its development and that the administrative procedure come back to the board by the second meeting in December 2016."
Thank you. So, that will be submitted for our next board package. Are there any other notices of motion tonight? Seeing none, we are now up to our action items for January 20th. The first item is trustee honoraria. Superintendent Veerman, report 16000 on page 15 of your board package. Welcome Superintendent Veerman.
Through the Chair, as part of the regulation for trustee honorariums and as part of the policy that was passed by the trustees, there is an opportunity to adjust the honorarium based on enrollment, enrollment projections. And the report identifies the change in the honorarium as a result of the enrollment adjustment. I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions for Superintendent Veerman on this report tonight? Trustee Harvey Hope?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Superintendent Veerman. Thank you very much for this report and schedule. It is really clear and I appreciate that. One small thing for the next report perhaps would be, it talks about, in the Appendix A, that the enrollment's based on, and it describes the actual legalistic definition. But it doesn't actually use a date so that if anybody was trying to match that number to something else, they could find it. So, I was wondering whether we could actually put ADE for 2014/15 or, you know, what the actual date the number was or where you could find it so that it's very, people actually realize it's not the September 2015 enrollment. It's actually last year's average enrollment. So, just to be really clear so that we know if somebody's trying to sort of second-guess, check it, whatever, that it's sitting there.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions on this motion tonight? Seeing none, this will come back for our meeting in two weeks. Thank you Superintendent Veerman. Our next item is the Striking Committee Report. Chair Amos and Vice Chair Graves, report 16003 on page 17 of your board package. As you know, there was much discussion on this previously. And so, the report is here for your viewing. If there's any comments or questions regarding it? Is there a will to waive the rules to deal with it tonight? Yes, moved by Trustee Grabent, seconded by Trustee Oliver. Is there any discussion on waiving the rules for this motion tonight? Trustee Grabent?
I just feel that we should waive the rules because some of these committees are probably getting going. So, we want proper representation.
Thank you. Is there any other speakers to waiving the rules? Seeing none, all those in favor of waiving the rules to deal with this motion tonight? Oops, sorry. I did the wrong one. So, we have to vote again. Okay. Okay, so now you can waive the... Can you please vote again? That passes unanimously. Thank you. So, I'll put the motion on the table. "Be it resolved, the Halton District School Board approved the trustee committee appointments as outlined in report 16003." Trustee Collard, seconded by Trustee Gray. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. We'll move on to the next item, which is EA allocation. Superintendent Zoniffeld, report 16004 on page 24 of your board package. Welcome Superintendent Zoniffeld. When you're ready.
Thank you through the Chair. You have before your report regarding a request for an additional allocation of 35 EAs to the system. This is in response to needs that have been identified to support students principally around health and safety needs so that they can attend fully and be supported within our schools. The timing of this, if you're wondering why in January we're coming with this request, through the fall, we engage in a process with our schools of looking at, because the needs that we addressed with our EA allocation in the spring, those needs aren't always the same in the fall time. Students move, come in and out of the system. And so, those adjustments go on. Plus, our students are growing, developing, becoming more independent. And so, we ensure that we're supporting students. And our number one, we want to do that is through that growing independence and growing staff capacity. So, we don't want the answer to always be add more staff. So, as we build that capacity and staff, that's our principal way of addressing those needs. Next, there's a timeline in the EA collective agreement when we can make adjustments in those staffing, when we can do transfers. And so, when that comes, there are EAs in some schools where the needs are less than we're anticipated. And so, that we make those adjustments and we shift EAs in the fall as well. And we continue to grow staff capacity. And students continue to adjust in their new settings and do quite well. It's when we've worked through all that that we say, are there still needs that we're struggling to address and therefore are there additional resources that are needed? So, we've been doing that through November, December, and that's why this request is coming forward now. And partly because we also have new students who have come into the system. Actually, a number of these EAs are for those students that we weren't anticipating. And once again, we've done many things to adjust and support those students, but some of them, we're still recognizing we need that additional support. So, that's why this request is here now. One other thing I'll add is that that number of 35, our intent is not to allocate the full 35 to the system right away. That we're probably going to put out around 25 or so to start because we've asked for a bit more to have a bit of a buffer. I don't want to be back here in another month or two saying we need another five or another 10. We've built that into this request. And if we need that number out there as the year goes along, we'll do so. And if we don't, then that'll be a resource that we don't actually allocate through the year. But new students do keep coming. I was working with one of our senior managers today on a request. We have a student coming in who's exceptionally high needs, requires two-on-one in the setting where he's in currently and is coming into our system. They'd like him to be in now, but we're, you know, we're planning and transitioning that student to try and have him in next week. But that's a two-on-one that we're going to need right away. So, that kind of need, we want to be able to respond to so that our students can be in and attending. Have to take any questions.
Thank you. I understand because the timing, there may be a will to waive the rules. Is there anyone interested in potentially waiving the rules? Trustee Collard, seconded by Trustee Reynolds. Any discussion on waiving the rules? Trustee Collard? Is that...
That was why I put myself on the speaker's list.
Okay. Trustee Oliver, did you want to speak to waiving the rules? So, how does this work when some people, if you waive the rules, are we then still going to have the conversation with the people who wanted to have questions asked? They will get to ask the question when the motion comes up. Trustee L. Harrison was yours regarding waiving the rules? Trustee Grabent was yours regarding waiving the rules?
I'm just cautious about waiving the rules, just with regards to, there may be comment from the public on spending that amount of money. That's all.
Okay. Any other comments about waiving the rules? Seeing none. Seeing none? We don't have a motion for waiving. Do you? Oh, sorry, you're right. Okay, all those in favor of waiving the rules regarding the EA allocation motion? That passes unanimously, thank you very much. I will put the motion on the floor, and then we can have the discussion on the questions. Be it resolved, the Hilton District School Board authorized the director to allocate 35 additional educational assistance to the system to address the special education needs of students. And that the expenditure of approximately $775,000, February 1st to June 30th, 2016, be funded through contingency funds and anticipated 2015-16 surplus funds. Moved by? Trustee Collard, seconded by Trustee Pappen. Now discussion. Trustee Collard, did you want to speak to this? No. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you through your chair, to Superintendent Zonfield. I'm very happy to support this motion. I do believe that it's an important one. It affects, this issue affects not only the student himself, but also the rest of the classroom and the teacher, him or herself. I do have a concern about the late timing of this request. And it appears to happen within this timeframe on an annual basis. This is the second time we've received this during our term. And I do understand the factors that come into play. You've explained them very well in the report. There are a number of issues, I do get that. But I wonder if there are opportunities to improve our process in order to better be able to plan and assess our capacity and our EA needs, so that we can be a little bit more proactive. And to the point of, so for example, to the point of students coming from other school boards, do we have a liaison person or some kind of a system in place where we could get a heads-up when a student leaves a particular board? And it is known to that board that they're coming here, so that we could prepare? So that would be one example. So I'm just looking for some improvements perhaps to our planning and predictions, so that we can better plan.
Through the chair, Trustee Oliver. For sure, this is something that, not just in your term, has come up annually. It's, we have been doing this for years. I think those around the table would concur. And so it's something that we struggle with because of the, you know, this is a very expensive resource. And we don't want the answer to be always, well, we just need another EA. And so definitely on the work of our department, we'll be looking at, how do we not find ourselves in this, let's say predicament, in this situation on a regular basis? One of my colleagues said to me recently, we don't do this in other areas of resourcing. His response was, fix this. And I would agree that this is, we need to find another way to do this. I think there are other structures that we employ within our system that we should look at in terms of how we allocate our EAs as well. So it's not my intent for this to continue. Certainly, I'll also say it's not an easy fix, because it's, there's an unending number of requests, right? That we can't always respond that way. So we have to keep that in check, and at the same time, be able to have, yet have resources in place that can respond and be flexible in terms of what those needs are. So certainly something we're looking at.
Thank you. Trustee Al Harrison.
Thank you very much. Through you, Madam Chair. I have three questions. Firstly, how does this number relate to the existing requests or needs in the system? And if the requests are still greater, what does the prioritization process look like? And then secondly, where do these EAs come from? Are we doing external hiring process then? Thanks.
So our, sorry, through the chair. Our department staff are in constant communication with schools and sort of tracking what those needs are. So in this request coming forward, we've identified that this number will allow us to ensure that all students can attend, because we have some students who are on restricted, I shouldn't say restricted, they're on a reduced timetable, because the recognition that that's the amount of time, that's the amount of time that that student can attend, their capacity to attend. But we're constantly working at growing that. And in some cases, we're okay, we're growing the limit that that student can. And now we're at the point where they're ready for more time in school. However, we don't have the resource to support them. So that's part of what's, that's, this is a response to that. It's also a response to, as we talked before, about new students coming in, and students we know are coming. So another example there, we have, we've had one, I think maybe two new group homes open in Oakville. And we're hearing more are coming, where those, from those homes, we have students with very high needs coming in. And there's a transition process that we're working through with those community agencies. But once again, we need resources to be able to support those students. They're coming into our life skills and community pathways programs. And so this allows us to do a good entry process and support those students well as they come in. So that's what's generating those, this request. So this, this number should allow us to support all those students that we're anticipating with those needs. There are always, always other requests. And I really mean always. But we, our allocation isn't to respond to all those requests. It's where we want to make sure we're addressing the health and safety and support needs of students in school. In terms of where these are coming from, these will be new hires. We do have a supply, a pretty healthy supply list of EAs, occasional EAs. So we draw from that first. And if we can't, you know, if we exhaust that pool, then we'll go, you know, to new hires. But we do have a pretty healthy supply list, and most of these will come from there.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
Thank you. First, a comment coming from a very high-growth community. I can certainly understand why this, this report is coming to us at this time, and why those numbers would be high. I was speaking to a parent just recently whose child showed up very late in the fall and new to our system and requires an entire EA, so one of those 35. So it's, it's not something that can be projected when, when students show up. And in Milton, like I said, they're showing up at quite a high rate. So I do appreciate this. I think it's very important. My concern is a little bit about the contingency funds. So my question would be through you, Chair, to Superintendent Veerman. I wonder if you could comment? I know this is just a technical question coming out of the blue, so I'm not sure if it's possible to do this evening. But do you know how, what percentage of that money would be coming from contingency? And what would be coming from the anticipated surplus? So a rough estimate would be, would be fine.
Through the chair, to respond to Vice Chair Graves' question. In the 15-16 budget, the trustees approved a contingency of roughly $867,000. Up to this point, very little, minimal has been spent from that contingency. So until the year-end surplus is actually finalized, the allocation would come from that contingency. I will also be bringing forward a report at the January 20th meeting with an update on the revised estimates at that point in time. And as part of the report, I will be indicating that we are projecting a year-end surplus, of which could also be used to fund this allocation. This is as the report indicates, an allocation for five months of the year, so for half of the year. So if as part of the 16-17 budget process, those positions continue, then the full-year impact would be 1.5 million.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves asked part of the question that I had. But one of the other comments that I wanted to make was, one of the other reasons why this happens every year in January is because January is one of those, what's the terminology? Natural breaks in the year. And often that is when students arrive. I know I had one school where we had seven kindergarten kids show up the first week of school, and that was, you know, on top of 95 kids. So that's a pretty big percentage increase in one year. Houses sell, they don't move until after Christmas, those kinds of things. So that's part of the reason. One of my comments would be, there are certain categories of need that almost automatically require an EA. And then there are other categories that are shared, resources can be used. In effect, I've seen situations where three or four students in a class, they all probably could use an EA, but they get sort of allocated one for that class. And then there's other situations where, depending on the training of the staff, the staff might be able to deal with it if they've been properly trained. And I'm wondering whether to follow up on Trustee Oliver's planning question. I come at it from a different point of view. I understand perfectly why there's a request every year. But I was wondering whether or not we could do some kind of analysis on the type of needs we have in the system. And if we have a sufficient number that are, no one would argue absolutely must have, even to have the child lock in the door, requires this. I'm thinking, one example would be perhaps a child in a wheelchair that needs one-on-one guarantee. Whether or not we should be somehow lobbying the government for a not-part-of-a-pool kind of funding? Because it's, that child is required to go to school. In order to have that child go to school, that is required. Therefore, it almost is more medical than educational, and maybe should be coming from a different spot. Because 35, 1.5 million for a year, if we added up the number of children in that, you know, this can get quite high, as we all know. And we have no control over it. And we can't, nor do we want to, exclude those children. So that's part of that planning process, coming at it from a slightly different way. Not, gee, did we know they were coming? How come we don't have enough? We can't ever really know. But on the other hand, maybe if we actually categorize the types of need, we might better know which ones we're going to fluctuate and which ones we're going to stay.
Through the chair. We're just beginning, now that we can do some of this work with staff, we're on EA allocation review, which has been, you see in your order papers. So we'll be coming forward with that. I believe the timing is, I think next November is when we anticipate to do that. But we've just said that our first meeting of that was today. And we're going to be involving CAC and other stakeholders in that review. So just in our initial discussions that I had with staff this morning, those and many other issues, we will be addressing through that review.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Yes, through the chair, to Superintendent Zonfield and also Superintendent Veerman. The funding formula as it exists for special education is acknowledged to be not meeting the needs currently. And I wonder, when we take expenditures such as what's proposed here, to be coming out of contingency funds and anticipated surplus funds, are those expenditures for, in fact, special education, then tracked back to the expenditure line for special ed? So that we have this acknowledged as above and beyond the money that we have through the funding formula? I just want to know that it's clear that, again, as we push forward to government to say that we're not being funded enough for special ed, that these other areas that we're taking money to help special ed, it's very transparent, in other words, that in fact, we do have over expenditures.
Superintendent Veerman, would you like to respond to that?
Sure. Through the chair, as part of the information we file with the ministry, and as part of the budget book that we do publish every year, there is a section that refers to the special education compliance, which identifies all the revenues received for special education and all the expenditures for the board for special education. So if these educational assistance are approved as part of the report, those expenditures would be included in that expenditure line for special education.
Thank you. You have to get back on the list, sorry. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. Through your chair, to Trustee Harvey Hope. Just in response to what you were saying, that's exactly what I was suggesting, is some kind of a, building some kind of a predictive model based on student condition that would allow us to estimate the numbers of EAs that we would need, that would be a little bit more predictable and allow for advanced planning, I guess, and securing of the EAs. And I do like your idea of exploring a different funding source, so that it's not limited to education. But I mean, it is, it is a medical issue, it is a community support type of issue. So, you know, how do we move that up the ladder to the province to take a look at that?
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. I think in response to Trustee Gray, I think the point being that it doesn't come out on the budget book as coming out of contingency. In effect, we do a motion to move the contingency line over to the EA line. And therefore, it will come under the EA line, and it will show up, as Superintendent Veerman said. So it doesn't like disappear into the black hole of contingency on the financial statements. So I just wanted to, I think that was what your question was, more so than, anyway.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this motion? I'm assuming you don't need me to read it again? Okay, all those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Superintendent Zonfield. Okay, our next items are information items. The first item, 4.2.4, French recruitment report. Unfortunately, Superintendent Dyson is not well tonight, and so will not be here. So Director Miller is going to share the report with us. But any questions will have to be really held until, if there's anything that is pertinent that Superintendent Dyson needs to respond to, we'll have to come back for the next meeting. Director Miller.
Through you, Chair Amos, to all trustees. The reports before you, I mean, we may be able to answer some of the questions, but the report was prepared by Superintendent Dyson. And unfortunately, he also missed, because of the Christmas break and all that, we haven't had much of a chance to talk about this report. So we can, around the table, we can try to answer some of the questions. Or as Chair Amos said, we could defer the questions of these reports till next week, when our next board meeting, whichever you prefer.
Do you want to address anything on the report?
No. Sorry, through you, Chair Amos. It's self-explanatory. We're in a new recruitment process now. And we are actively recruiting French teachers, so.
Is there any other, is there any comments or questions on this report tonight? Trustee Harvey Hope.
I had one question that might...
I had one question that might, the report talks about the uptake. And I know we've asked this before and I've actually never yet seen what I'm about to ask for, which is the children that show up in grade one French immersion that are not in Halton Kindergartens. Because when we keep using these SK to grade one uptake numbers, we are ignoring certain areas of Halton. A lot of children arrive at their grade one French immersion school and they are not included in the numbers. And in some cases, it's a class. In particular, my ward is famous for this because of good preschools that they stay in. And so I was, it's not necessarily related to the French recruitment, except that it actually makes the problem somewhat worse. And it's also a lot harder to plan for depending on whether or not they actually sign up for French immersion in the appropriate time slot, which would be soon. And then the other question I had was, the report talks about, I think it was in the appendix, about the grads for Appendix A. All of the different programs have specific numbers except for their, the Brock, Laurentian, the concurrent education graduates, doesn't have any numbers. And so I was, all the other ones are like 10, 15, 20, and I have no idea whether we're talking 20 or 200 are coming out of the concurrent grads. So it's just a point that if I was reading this whole appendix, I would like, oh, there aren't any. But that one line shows that there are actually quite, could possibly be quite a few. So if by any chance that information was available to add to that, that would be useful.
Thank you, Director Miller.
Through your chair, Mr. Trustee Harvey Hope. On your first question, the reason the uptake in there was just to give some context into the French recruiting. This report is really about the recruitment process. And you're right, we do track the students from SK into grade one as uptake. But those kids that do join our board are ultimately included in the numbers in terms of staffing. It's more difficult when they join the board in September as opposed to, but then they come around when we do reorgs and so on. And they would be included, they would be included later on in terms of percentages. So I don't think that this is inaccurate. In fact, I'm sure it's not inaccurate. No, not inaccurate, but I guess, there's not a, there are students that come from the other boards, but we also lose students from our boards as well, from our board. So some of it has to do with the way in the timing of the uptake and so on, but roughly what we'll do is we'll take a look at the percentage of kids in French immersion versus this percentage of kids in the English program and work out a percentage there and consider that uptake at some point as we go along. As for your second question, I don't know the answer to that, but we can certainly look at it, for sure.
You have very short time left. Go ahead.
Perhaps my comment could be forwarded to, in the preparation of the LTAP, in that the uptake numbers in the LTAP, never have we tried, we should collect it and we should actually know of the children that are in grade one total, not just the ones that came out of kindergarten. It would be a number that we should have at our disposal when we talk about this further, somewhere down the line.
Okay.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Trustee Oliver.
Through your chair to Director Miller. I'm just curious whether we've looked at where we stand in relation to the other school boards and whether we are competitive in the timing that we hold our interviews, recruit, and offer placements.
Through your chair, Amos, to Trustee Oliver. Yeah, we are, because much of the recruitment occurs during teacher fairs. And when we go to those fairs, that's where all the, that's where all the boards are represented. So our timing is about the same, you know, givertake here or there. There is, some boards have different positions around offering positions as opposed to us. I don't, Executive Officer McFadden, I don't know, you've been here long enough to comment on that, but we do, there are some issues. In terms of recruitment, we're about the same, but in terms of job offers, there's a difference. So I'll let.
Executive Officer Sir McFadden.
Thank you. Through the chair. This is something that we have looked at over the last couple of years of my previous tenure with the board. And it does come down, as Director Miller says, to when we do the job offer. The initial contact and the interviews usually happen at this time of the year as the job fairs are starting right now. Some other boards make permanent offers right at the time of interview, whereas we have waited until our allocations are confirmed. And that is the point at which we find candidates have accepted other offers in some cases. But through my experience in the recruitment and in particularly recruiting French teachers for a number of years, geography plays the major role in an applicant's choice. Most applicants in French know that they will get multiple offers and many of them choose to work in the board that they graduated from or where they already have living accommodation. So that plays a major role in acceptance of position for French teachers because they are a very highly sought-after commodity. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much. My question's been answered through the last series of questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other speakers or questions on this topic tonight? Seeing none, thank you very much, Director Miller, for your report. Our next item is the board report schedule. Director Miller, report 16002 on page 31 of your board package.
Through your chair, Amos, to trustees. We have no updates on the board reports beyond what's in the schedule or the schedule the last time we spoke about it. I will, I will give you a heads up, though, if you go down, and I mentioned this earlier, April 20th, we have operational goals strategies for 201617. We'll probably be coming back to the board with a deferral of that till later in the school year as that's contingent on the development of our multi-year plan. And we don't anticipate that that would be completely, completed by April 20th. And even if it is, it would be just around there and it wouldn't have given us much time to do the operational goals for next year. So that's just a caution of something upcoming.
Thank you. Is there any comments or questions on this report for the director tonight? Seeing none, we are now up to committee reports. Are there any committee reports tonight? Trustee Collard.
Yes, CAC met last evening and it was a very productive meeting. We had a review of assistive technology and a lot of participation from trustees. We had seven trustees present. I think that was almost a record. So that was really nice to see lots of trustees come out. And we had our first meeting of the subcommittee that's reviewing the Spec Ed plan this afternoon. And we plan to meet bi-weekly until the end of March to get it complete. And it was very well managed and unorganized and I thank Superintendent Zahnfeld for his work on that.
Thank you. Is there any other committee reports tonight? Seeing none, we are now up to the director's report. Director Miller.
Thank you, Chair Amos. I have four brief things to report tonight. The first one is, if you've been on our HDSB website of late, I think you'll see a nice improvement. I want to thank Marnie Denton there and her team. It's well organized. And this is only the first step for the website, but we've already had several positive comments on how much easier it is to navigate through it and so on. And this is only a preliminary step. Our Caroline, Caroline who's been working on it, has only been working on it for a couple of weeks and look where we've come. So I think I want to congratulate Marnie and her department. On that, our questionnaire for Program Viability Committee is easily accessible on the site now and you can get to it from the very first page. I believe we've already had people completing the questionnaire and we've had people commenting on the validity of the questionnaire, which we expected. So, but it's up there and it's easily accessible. Along with the Program Viability Committee, we have met with the successful company that was given the contract for focus groups and that will soon be rolled out and they will be running the focus groups as per the timeline last time. Today, I sent a message out to trustees around CHCH TV featuring us and our Welcome Center. I want to thank Superintendent Etoff. He combed his hair for the occasion. He was interviewed on CHCH and I'm hoping, it was on early evening tonight, I'm hoping that it's on again at 11:00 so you can watch how we've been helping some Syrian families adapt to life in Canada and in the Halton District School Board. The final comment I have to make is the big inauguration or new robotics starts this Saturday. It's at New Street, so if you can get yourself down there, you will not be disappointed to see these kids as they get their task around robotics. And the enthusiasm is amazing. So it's at New Street, I think nine till 12:00. Yeah. Yeah. I'll be speaking at 9:45, that's probably a highlight, but. Anyway, thanks, that's all.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for the director and his report tonight? Trustee L Harrison.
Thank you very much. Through you, Madam Chair. My question is with respect to the questionnaire that went online today. And I just, I clicked through out of curiosity and interest. And I noted on the first page, there was something about if people require assistance, they should go to the website. And it was just a pretty generic statement, go to the website. And if I need assistance in the first place, I wonder if that's going to be helpful enough to get their input. And I was wondering if you could walk me through if somebody did find, or what somebody should be looking for if they did require assistance and what assistance would be available to them. Thanks.
I'll defer to Associate Director Boak.
Through Chair Amos to trustee. There's a couple of forms of assistance. We've directed them to their homeschool if they would prefer a paper copy. So folks will get a center email tonight, there'll be tweets, a news release, so folks hopefully can find out about this thing. But if they, if technology is an issue, that is one place they can go for a paper copy. If they need support around translation, those kinds of things, we can direct them towards those services in the community as well. Are those the kinds of, is that the kind of support that you were thinking of, Trustee L Harrison?
Sorry, I should have it open and maybe if somebody else has another question, that I can find the exact comment. And the other thing is just, when I go to the, I wonder whether in our, under newsroom, the news release is there and it's just a bit of a loop. I wonder if it would be useful, if people thought it would be useful to have a live link there to get people right to the questionnaire.
Through you, Chair Amos, to Trustee L Harrison. I'm going to go to Marnie and, is that trustee? We'll do that first thing tomorrow morning.
Did you have the other information?
Yes, I did, sorry. It is, it says, please refer to the multilingual assistance document on the HDSB website. So I just think that maybe consideration might be given to making that a live link to the actual spot where people should go to as opposed to sending them on a search just in case. Thank you.
And we can do both those and we will do both those. Thanks. Thanks for the feedback.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments for the director? Trustee Harvey Hope.
Yeah, just a question on, I saw the news release, I know it'll be tweeted, it'll come home in a center mail, but is there any way to, we've done it again in that this timeline between January 6th and January 20th is after some of the first school council meetings. And so if there's a way to channel through the school councils, if they are sending out a newsletter or whatever in January, because we have asked for consultation quite a few times in this last couple of months where school councils don't have time to put it on their agenda. Like it's not, in this case, it's not a question of putting it on the agenda, you're asking people to individually do something, but it's not able to get onto the agenda to say, please do it. And so we're relying on people doing the center mail and there might be some people that are, would attend a school council meeting because maybe they already have translation services set up or whatever, but they won't be able to take it in through others' methods.
Through you, Chair Amos, to Trustee Harvey Hope. We've provided all the principals with a script and they will be doing it at school council as well. We've asked, they've been provided with a script that is an informational script and helping and directing people to the questionnaire and to the site. So all principals and all schools will have that and Associate Directors have something to add.
For schools that don't have a school council meeting until February, the principals are putting that out to their councils ahead of time with the script, in fact, as well and asking if folks want to distribute that, that's absolutely great. They'll still hear the school council feedback in February for the council feedback, but at least it gets some information out for individual families to respond to the questionnaire. And I'm just looking back at Marnie, I believe we will have some ads in papers as well and we've got some posters in or flyers in our daycares as well for families who have young folks who are not yet in the system.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions for the director on his report tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to communications from the chair. I only have one thing right now. I'd like to thank each and every one of you sitting around these tables for your support for the challenge that I threw out at the last board meeting to create a backpack for the Welcome Center. I would like to thank you very much for all of your support and I know that there are quite a number of backpacks that are now on their way to the Welcome Center and that there are a few more to come. So thank you very much to everyone here for all of your support for the initiative. I appreciate your taking up the challenge. We're now up to trustee comments and questions. Are there any trustee comments and questions tonight? Trustee L Harrison.
Sure thing. Thank you. So I just wanted to congratulate the Pine Grove Penguins. And although that isn't their usual mascot name, it becomes the name when you do the polar bear dip on November, on January 1st. So a brave group of souls plunged into Lake Ontario from Pine Grove and congratulations to them on their bravery and setting 2016 on a course for adventure. Thanks.
Thank you. And do I understand that you also participated in that plunge? Well, good for you. Are there any other trustee questions or comments tonight? Seeing none, it is 8:15, oh, maybe not. Trustee Gervence.
I was excited to read that the board will be unveiling a partnership with Isola Mittal de Fasco. with Isola Mittal De Fasco, a new advanced manufacturing program that will be starting this September at MM Robinson High School. So that's fantastic.
Thank you. Okay, so it is 8:15. And can I have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Gray seconded by trustee L. Harrison. All those in favor? No, you can't say no. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone, and have a great night.